Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
This regular meeting of the Mobile County Commission is now called to order. If you would please stand for the invocation, it will be given today by Commissioner Merturia Ludgood, and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
We come this morning thanking you for this day and another opportunity to assemble, to do what we believe is your will. Father, we ask your presence, your guidance, your wisdom, as we deliberate and make decisions for the good of Mobile County. Father, we ask a special blessing upon all of our employees, the people who every day go out and meet the public in the name of Mobile County. We thank you for their efforts, and we ask that you keep them safe and bless them in their work. We ask this all in our Son Jesus' name. Amen.
Do we have anyone signed in to speak this morning?
Yes, ma'am. We have two signed in to speak this morning. The first is Nell Gustafson with Alabama Kidney Foundation.
Okay. Gustafson, welcome. Good to have you this morning. We thought we recognized her.
We have a big fundraiser on March 11th. It's our Kidney Walk, and she is our patient chair. And the reason she is the patient chair is because I donated a kidney to my best friend in 2019.
Wow.
So she is a true hero, and I'm just gonna...
All right. She deserves that.
Because I myself am a recipient, so I know exactly what it feels like to have someone come forward. I'm not going to bore you with a lot of statistics, because I believe Becky Connolly and I have been before you before and told you about the 12,000 Alabamians must receive dialysis treatments at least three days a week, every week. And there's currently 400,000 people, Alabamians, with chronic kidney disease. Chances are, you know somebody, you know me, so there you go. So what I'm here to do today is thank you also for your support, your past support of the Kidney Walk, but also try to get you engaged and get your departments involved and join in joining the walk.
Great idea. Well, it is a most worthy endeavor. We are so happy to be able to partner, and we appreciate so much the heroes who have stepped forward and given that part of themselves to help a fellow human being. So God bless you, and God bless the work that you do. And we're just happy to be supportive and a part of it. And I'm sure we can come up with some kind of a competition. Everybody loves a good competition. Excellent. All right. Very good. Thank you again for being here.
Thank you so much.
There, that's there.
I'm loud. Yeah, thank you so much. I know when I had my surgery, my department was very supportive, as were y'all. And I just thank you so much.
Thank you, Rhonda.
I just wanted to add a little something, because I just can't seem to shut up and sound like I'm supposed to. But I did want to thank y'all, because you are the leaders of our area. People look up to you. Your support means so much to us. There are now 14,000 Alabamians with kidney disease, and we have like three new dialysis clinics right here locally that have just been put up over the last year or so. Our need for transportation is up 20%. Our need for daily living needs, which is utilities and things like that, is up 30% in January. So we don't know where this year is going, but we so appreciate your support, and we invite you to come to the Walk. Let us honor you. Y'all have a big old sign. Let us honor you. We would love to do that, because it means so much for us, for people to see that our leaders support our efforts.
Give us that date again, so everybody can hear.
It is March 11th. It is bright and early in the morning. You can come at 9:00 a.m. is when we begin the Walk. It only lasts for about an hour and a half. There are jumpies for the kids, and face painting, and balloons, and food, and a DJ. You can do the Cupid Shuffle. And I would also love to invite one of you all to do the invocation. Honestly, I think that that would be a great way to begin that highlight, just to show. And it would just be, mean the world to us to have any of you all, or all you all, there.
And where will everyone meet?
Preparatory school.
Okay.
And it's right there. The DJ booth is where the Walk begins, where we open it up with our chair and patient chairs.
And you can register on site, or do you need to register in advance?
Well, it's better to register in advance, but you know, we're a nonprofit. We'll take it no matter what you got. We're there with our hand out, because we really believe in what we do. We are community-based. We are patient-centered. And that money is staying right here in the Mobile area to help our local people.
March 11th, what time again?
9:00 a.m.
9:00 a.m.
Be there or be square.
All right.
It's gonna be great.
I'm sorry. I'll be in central now with the 100th anniversary of Ace Hardware.
And they deserve you. They are blessed to have you. So either one, we would love it if you were content to have this one. Thank y'all so much.
Have a great afternoon. Thank you.
We have one more person signed up, but she wasn't sure she would speak. But I'll call her. Nancy Nigren. She is wanting to ask some questions about Agenda Item Number 58, Compel subdivision.
Miss...
And she decided to pass.
Okay. All right. Very good. Okay. I think we are ready to go through the agenda. Go in, if you would please.
Number one, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January 23rd, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Number two, approve a list of claims.
So moved.
Second.
Number three, approve amending resolution adopted in Mobile County Commission, January 23rd, 2023, minutes, Agenda Item Number 42, as follows.
So moved.
Second. What do we, are we just adding numbers or something, or what do we add?
Commissioner, they submitted the wrong vehicle number.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Number four, approve appointment of Jan Greer Henfinger to serve as member of the Mobile County Animal Shelter Advisory Board as a representative for District 3, replacing Jessica Alday.
So moved.
Second.
Number five, approve reappointment of Henry C. Newton to serve as a member on the Board of Directors of the St. Elmore Irvington Water Authority.
So moved.
Second.
Number six, approve request of the Sheriff's Office to add one internally purchased vehicle to their fleet as follows. The addition of this vehicle will not increase their fleet.
So moved.
Second.
Number seven, approve contract with Mobile Area Chamber of Commerce Foundation, Inc. in the amount of $150,000 from District 1 funds for business development navigation services.
So moved.
Second.
Number eight, approve for Whistler Bicycle Trail in the amount of $65,000 from District 1 funds.
So moved.
Second.
Number nine, adopt a resolution declaring certain items assigned to the county garage surplus.
So moved.
Second.
Number 10, approve a professional services contract with Motor Carrier Consulting, Inc. for services according to fee schedule for administration of testing under the Mobile County Drug Alcohol Policy for a three-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Number 11, approve appointment of Shane McLean to serve on the Board of Directors of the Kusla Water District to represent Place 3, Smithtown Oak Grove.
So moved.
Second.
Number 12, approve amending term expiration date for the appointment of Reverend Victor Craig into to expire October 12th, 2023, to fulfill the term of Cleon Bolden on the Board of Commissioners of Mobile County Housing Authority.
So moved.
Second.
Number 13, approve amending the County Commission meeting minutes as follows.
Question on this. I assume what's happened is these were originally approved as Commission District projects, and they are eligible for ARPA funding, all of these. Is this, is this something that we need to look back at other appropriations to determine if there is our eligibility? That we could shift money or appropriations to ARPA? Is this, is this an exhaustive list, I guess is what I'm asking? Or are there others that potentially may be eligible?
Now, this is not an exhaustive list. We can do that type of evaluation. I think the major note in this, I believe, is that most of these projects were originally intended to be ARPA funding, and there was just a change in how we assign project numbers now versus then. And this helps clean that process up. But I believe their original intent was for it to be ARPA funded. But we can certainly go back and do that type of evaluation and look.
I think it would probably be a good idea. If there's anything that we can attribute to ARPA funding, then I think it would be a good idea as a place to start and reserve the Commission District money for other things, potentially.
Yes, ma'am.
That'd be great. Thank you.
And this was that 2.5 each one of us was allocated.
Right. Commissioner Hudson, this is from the $2.5 million revenue loss that I think everybody has it committed already. So this isn't from the general ARPA unrestricted source of funding.
So if we have the 2.5...
That's where this is coming from.
If we haven't already earmarked something, I got it.
Yes, yes. Just to be clear.
We didn't have the number in system.
I think I've already earmarked mine.
Yes, you've already earmarked yours. It's not additional money. It's the same 2.5.
Okay.
This was from District 1 ARPA?
Yes, this is District 1. Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Number 14, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County, any amount of $19,200 from District 1 funds for the music department and football and track uniforms.
So moved.
Second.
Number 15, approve appropriation contract with the City of Satsuma, in the amount of $25,000 from District 1 funds for the Satsuma Fire Rescue Health Wellness and Fitness Program.
So moved.
Second.
Number 16, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County, in the amount of $2,105.60 from District 2 funds for tables and chairs for the school library.
So moved.
Second.
Number 17, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County, in the amount of $4,342.53 from District 2 funds to install a wall mule in the school lobby.
So moved.
Second.
Number 18, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County, in the amount of $2,400 from District 2 funds for outdoor learning picnic tables.
So moved.
Second.
Number 19, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County, in the amount of $7,675 from District 2 funds for digital, interactive, graphic board, canic kits, and Chromebooks.
So moved.
Second.
Number 20, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County, in the amount of $15,934.60 from District 2 funds for a school marquee monument.
So moved.
Second.
Number 21, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County, in the amount of $24,000 from District 2 funds for band instruments and athletic supplies.
So moved.
Second.
22, approve amendment to annual contract with the Explorer Center, Inc., Doing Business as Explorium Science Center, to increase the contract amount from $75,000 to $90,000 for a total additional amount of $15,000 for its Spring 2024 exhibit, Cuba. This amount will come from District 2 funds.
So moved.
Second.
23, approve appropriation contract with Tomerville Crichton Community Development Corporation, in the amount of $5,000 from District 3 funds for food pantry services in Biula Battery.
So moved.
Second.
24, approve sponsorship agreement with Providence Foundation in the amount of $2,500 from District 3 funds for its Festival of Flowers event.
So moved.
Second.
25, approve appropriation contract with Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County, in the amount of $15,000 from District 1 funds to support baseball and softball programs.
So moved.
Second.
26, approve appropriation contract with Soccer For Life, in the amount of $7,500 from District 1 funds for operating expenses.
So moved.
Second.
27, approve appropriation contract with Alabama Kidney Foundation in a total amount of $5,000. Be divided as follows for its Mobile Kidney Walk in celebration.
So moved.
Second.
Number 28, approve appropriation contract with Trinity Gardens Community Civic Club in the amount of $5,000 from District 1 funds for operating expenses. Project is contingent upon paperwork and legal review.
So moved.
Second.
Number 29, approve change order number one with Rogers and Willard, Inc. for renovation of property at 355 North Anne Street. If implemented, the change will decrease the contract by $1,872.36. New contract total will be $792,090.64.
So moved.
Second.
Number 30, authorize reappraisalment and receiving bids for Revenue Commissioner Teller Wendell. No bidders were present at the January 24th, 2023 pre-bid conference.
Is it, this the job that we've, that we were talking about here a couple of weeks ago? That no one bid on the job, and now we're rebid it, and no one showed up for the bid? Is this a different job?
No, sir. This is it. We bid it the first time, and the bid came in around $75,000, $78,000. We rejected that, because it was high. Now, we can't generate any interest from any other companies. It's a, it's a lot of difficulty for this money, I believe.
Is there any way that we can do this in-house, possibly? I mean, since it seems like we're having trouble getting anyone else to do?
I think, based on the complexity, it's probably a little bit much for the manpower we have.
Okay.
So you're just gonna wait a while and then try again?
Yes, ma'am. We'll try and make some more phone calls, and hopefully, the market will loosen up some, and contractors will be more interested.
So, Kyle, is our estimate of what it ought to cost, is it in, is it off? Or something maybe given the cost of getting people to do stuff these days?
I think it's a little bit of that. We estimated $40,000 to $50,000. And I think it's, I believe the issue is contractors can make more money doing easier jobs. So they're, they're not bidding on this one just yet. I think there's plenty of work out there to make more money.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Number 31, award bid to Acre Construction Corporation for Sim Senior Center Walking Trail for a total bid in the amount of $264,846.
So moved.
Second.
32, approve acceptance of a grant award in a subrecipient agreement from the Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for Mobile County Blue Way Trail Development Project, in the amount of $14,049,033, with no match required, and authorize execution of all associated documents.
Could we, Tina, could you give us a rundown of this project? Some of the specifics and what this will do, this $14 million?
Yes, ma'am. Happy to. So this is the final phase. We're headed towards finalizing the master plan and engaging stakeholders, and finalizing the marketing and branding plan, and prioritizing projects, public access improvement projects to fund with this funding, this additional funding. So this is a restore project, Restore Bucket 1, targeted towards providing the public more access to waters and improving the economy. So it's a win-win project for the environment and the economy.
Where all will it extend?
So the current plan is for it to be a countywide trail with segments from north Mobile County all the way around to Biula Battery and Escatapa Hollow, Escatapa River, as well.
So it will basically create that trail?
Yes, ma'am.
You'll have along the way, you'll have points where you can embark and disembark?
Trail loops with signage and marketing, social media and online marketing to help people know where to go, and then have some consistency in signage, so that it's a cohesive trail. Although the trail may be in north Mobile County, or in Biula Battery, or Escatapa, the signs would be similar, so the people know they're on a Mobile County, the Mobile County.
How many miles of waterway?
Oh, my goodness. We have so many miles of waterway.
That are involved with this trail?
What I'd like to do, if it's okay with you, is we're gonna get the consultants downtown, down here soon, in March, and have them give a presentation of where we are. And I'd like to do it here, if...
Sure. I was gonna ask if you would do that. That'd be great.
And so they can bring the boards, the storyboards, and the graphics, and the digital presentations, and give you a better view of the vision for this project.
I think this is something the public could really get excited about. So I think that we definitely need to get that information out there and market and advertise what we're doing, to let the public know.
And we have been hamstrung somewhat by the pandemic, because our engagement process initially called for engaging with the public in person. So I hope that we'll be able to do that coming.
Okay. Well, I look forward to seeing that presentation.
Yes, ma'am. Happy to.
Any other questions on that?
So moved.
Second.
33, approve amendment to appropriation contract with Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County to change the purpose of the funds. Funds will be used for an art lab and home economics classroom.
So moved.
Second.
Home economics is back. Very good.
34, accept a grant award from the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs for the Local Government Pistol Permit Revenue Loss Fund for a to-be-determined amount with no local match, and authorize the President of the Commission to execute all documents associated with this award.
So moved.
Second.
35, approve change order number two to the Statement of Work Number Two, dated November 9th, 2022, for contract with Alight Solutions, LLC to support integration analysis, bills, and needs within the tenant remediation efforts. This change order will not impact the project budget.
So moved.
Second.
36, resend action in the January 23rd, 2023 minutes, Agenda Item Number 39, approve an agreement with Planet Equity Group, LLC to provide onsite professional services of a workday consultant.
So we're not gonna have that now?
Sorry.
Oh, we were sending it, because we're no longer gonna have the onsite?
Good morning, commissioners. So from our previous meeting, we started having conversations with the consulting firm regarding our agreement and the process. In that process, the consultant got another offer. So yeah, we are back at the well.
Very competitive there, isn't it?
IT industry has been very competitive.
Okay. Well, we'll await the next opportunity then, I guess.
The plan right now we have is to kind of hire a couple of people that's in IT and fill in those gaps, so that we don't have any void. But we're trying our best.
I know you are. Well, thank you.
So moved.
Second.
37, approve change order number one with Tyndall Construction, LLC for A4 renovations and information technology training room revisions for additional offices and information technology training room and on the seventh floor. If implemented, the change will increase the contract by $48,236. New contract total will be $611,111.
So moved.
Second.
Number 38, approve contract with Moa, Band of Choctaw Indians, in the amount of $50,000 from American Rescue Plan Act Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund for repairs at Moa Choctaw Community Centers, Educational Programs, Playground Equipment, Museum Veterans Park Equipment, Tribal Police Department Maintenance, and Metal Shelter for the Community Outreach Services.
So moved.
Second.
39, approve sponsorship with Alabama School of Math and Science, in the amount of $5,000 from General Government Special Projects Fund for its EO Wilson Science Building Fundraiser Event on May 5th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Number 40, approve acceptance of grant award and subrecipient agreement from Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the Biula Battery Water Distribution System upgrades, Phase 1 and Phase 2, in the amount of $7,864,448, with no match required, and authorize execution of all associated documents.
Tina, will you speak on that briefly, please?
Yes, sir. This is another restore project, Restore Bucket 1. So basically, we're seeing the federal agency, the state agencies, issue these notice of awards to add the construction funding. And this project is one that we are doing in cooperation with and for the Biula Battery Water Authority. The project is at 100% design. It's ready to go to construction. And now we have the funding to issue the bids and go forward.
Thank you.
Very good.
So moved.
Second.
Yes, so moved.
Number 41, approve application for special events retail alcohol license submitted by Eminence Promotion, LLC for southeastern combat championships.
So moved.
Second.
Number 42, approve implementation change request form for Pioneer Technology Group for $4,500 to configure notification services for the probate court's benchmark court case system software to allow for email notifications to attorneys and parties regarding upcoming hearings.
So moved.
Second.
43, authorize advertising and receiving bids for Isom Clement Memorial Civil Rights Park.
So moved.
Second.
Number 44, authorize advertising and receiving bids for Escatapa Hollow Park and Campground Improvements, Phase 1B.
So moved.
Second.
45, authorize advertising and receiving bids for construction of a Mobile County Golf Course.
So moved.
Second.
And 46, authorize advertising and receiving bids for construction of the infrastructure for a Mobile County Golf Course and Park.
So moved.
What's the difference between 45 and 46?
We're separating out the golf course work to have a specialized contractor experienced in the golf course construction element.
Second.
Number 45, authorize cancellation of subrecipient agreement, excuse me, subrecipient agreement with the City of Biula... With the City of Biula Battery for a term of January 24th, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, in the amount of up to $100,000 of community development block grant funds. The subrecipient agreement was to provide for removal of spot black.
I gave an explanation, even though no one's asking, but that was the grant money that they had received. I think their building permit superintendent had resigned, and they haven't hired anyone. So I talked with the mayor of Biula Battery. I want it to be understood that they're just not neglecting spending the money. They would like to receive the grant again in the future, but they, right now, they don't have the personnel to execute the grant. So I told them we would take it back. And... and, uh, uh, re-appropriate it to, uh, someone else, another city maybe, and that, in the future they could, um, apply for these grants again.
So moved.
Second.
Number forty-eight, approve option to, for real estate purchase agreement with Muir Barnot ELP LLC to purchase approximately one hundred and forty-six acres of real property located at twelve seventy-four zero U.S. Highway Forty-Three North Access, Alabama. At an amount to be determined with two ninety-day option extensions with earnest money in the amount of sixty thousand and authorize the county commission president to execute the conditional real estate purchases agreement and other documents as are necessary pending legal review.
Commissioners, if I may just make one clarification. It's a hundred and eighty-day original term with two extensions that could make it last up to one year. I'll make that clarification. And after the entity does its due diligence, if it still wants to proceed, then we'll be back with the commission for approval of a purchase price based on fair market value, whatever the incentives are. David Rogers is here just in case there's any question, but that's basically what we're talking about. I'm gonna talk over with Ms. Kayla Byrne.
Okay, any, any questions?
This is essentially all of the lands. The actual acreage may change based on survey. It's actually all the lands that within our ownership.
But we'll have, so after this one forty-six, we'll have nothing left?
Well, there'll be some lagoon ponds and some other remnant parcels that we probably can't give away, but for the most part, it's all the land on Highway Forty-three, Forty-three to the railroad line and then east from the railroad line to the river. Whether we sell them the land at the river's edge or we lease it to them is to be determined because as you recall, there are some geol, uh, there are some easements on, in that area that are done for geological purposes. I know we can't sell those, so we may lease them or we may sell it, but we can draw that out. But all that will be determined during the due diligence period. But if we sell it, we'll be done with it mostly, and I know, you know, and they're also be quite happy.
Very good.
So we'll be back with y'all in, in time as it progresses.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Number forty-nine, consider taking and following action on bids.
I wanna talk about a couple, I wanna just, for the purpose of public record, I wanna talk about these bids, particularly, uh, the third, I guess, three dash twenty-three and four dash twenty-three, because I think there's been some misinformation going around, uh, in the community that, that this is some kind of policy that the county has on bidding these concession stands. And I just wanna clarify to the public, this is not a policy that the county has in place. This is nothing that the county, I would love nothing more than not to have to bid the concession stands at West Mobile County Park. But because of state bid laws, we, we have no option at this, at this point in time but to do that. So I just wanted to clarify to the public, this is not a county policy. I'll assure you that sixteen dollars a game and three dollars a game, the county is not profiting off of that. As a matter of fact, when the girls softball, who has always won those bids, um, win the bids, then they use the money to pay for, uh, their umpires. And when they lose the bid, because I am a supporter of the girls softball league at West Mobile County Park, it ends up actually costing the county money because I in turn end up dedicating money from my district funds to help pay for their umpires. So I guess out of all that, what I really want noted is that this is not a county policy, this is a state bid law that we have to abide by, and that's why, uh, the concessions are bid at these parks. And so with that said, so moved.
Well, I have one I wanted to mention here.
Okay.
The, uh, one fifteen dash twenty-two, uh, Sim's Community Center Park. Uh, this rescinds the ground maintenance bid, but in an upcoming agenda, uh, and legal is working on this right now, we will actually be terminating the lease agreement that we have with the Mobile County Board of School Commissioners for that property, uh, because they own the property and, you know, of course, the county built the community center and has been maintaining the major capital works out there. Uh, the city of Sim has requested to take that over, and so they are in the process, if they haven't already, entered into a lease agreement with the Board of School Commissioners. So we will be terminating ours and back out of that. They've got a lot of plans to do some renovations and improvements and, and we think this is a very good thing. It's a win-win for both parties. So I was just giving you the FYI that, that will be coming up next. So, uh, did we have a motion approved?
Yes, I moved.
You, you made the motion?
Second.
Number fifty, approve a subscription renewal with CDW dash D, the amount of three hundred and eight dollars for Cisco Dual for Revenue Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Number fifty-one, approve software renewal with Cutting Edge Automotive Solutions LLC, an amount of one thousand one ninety-five for Texa HD Truck SW total for Public Works Department.
So moved.
Second.
Fifty-two, approve maintenance agreement with Eaton Corporation, an amount of three thousand four hundred for coverage of BRLA seal, thirty-two internal batteries for the Revenue Commissioner.
So moved.
Second.
Fifty-three, approve subscription renewal with Zoom Video Communications, Inc., for Zoom One Business Annual, any amount of one thousand nine 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 for county commission.
So moved.
Second.
Fifty-four, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds and/or easements from the following property owners for the following projects.
So moved.
Second.
Fifty-five, approve a signing contract for professional engineering services for safety improvements with Bell and Graff Road to Kimley Horn, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
Fifty-six, authorize advertising and receiving bids for safety improvements on Celeste Road.
So moved.
Second.
Fifty-seven, award bid to John G. Walton Construction Company, Inc., for Sand Ridge Road Resurfacing, Restoration, and Rehabilitation for the low bid, low base bid plus additive alternative B, in the amount of one million one hundred and forty thousand two ninety-five fifty-six.
So moved.
Second.
Fifty-eight, approve preliminary and final plat of compel states and preliminary and final plat of resubdivision of Lot Six River Traced Subdivisions and preliminary and final plat of resubdivision of Lot Twenty-Four Scott Acres Revised and preliminary and final plat of Sweet Melissa and preliminary and final plat of Cynthia Byrd Patello Road Subdivision and preliminary and final plat of Latham Isom Subdivision and preliminary and final plat of Dixie Manor Subdivision.
Cherie, I misunderstood. I, did you say earlier someone wanted to speak on this item?
Yes, ma'am, she declined, I mean, yes, sir, she declined to, uh, comment and Matthew spoke to her in the audience.
All right, thank you, Matthew. So moved.
Second.
Fifty-nine, adopt a resolution approving construction agreement for a local road safety initiative program project with the state of Alabama acting by through Alabama Department of Transportation Safety Improvements on Bell and Graff Road and authorize the president of the commission to execute the resolution and agreement on behalf of Mobile County.
So moved.
Second.
Number sixty, adopt resolution approving construction agreement for a state public road and bridge funding project with the state of Alabama acting by and through Alabama Department of Transportation. Additional lanes on Tanner William Road, Tanner Williams Road and authorize the president of the commission to execute resolution and agreement on behalf of Mobile County.
So moved.
Second.
Sixty-one, adopt a resolution approving preliminary engineering right-of-way and construction agreement for an Alabama transportation rehabilitation and improvement program two project with state of Alabama acting by and through Alabama Department of Transportation Intersection Improvements, including adding a roundabout at S, SR one eighty-eight and Irvington Biula Battery Highway and authorize the president of the commission to execute the resolution and agreement on behalf of Mobile County.
So moved.
Second.
Sixty-two, approve and adopt a MAU program application from Hope Byrd for the adoption of a segment of East Coy Smith Highway from Shepherd House Road eastward to Mount Vernon City Limits.
So moved.
Second.
Sixty-three, approve setting the following speed limits as listed below for roads, segment of roads, and subdivision streets.
So moved.
Second.
Sixty-four, adopt a resolution and approve agreement with Alabama power, provide power for a new traffic signal and street light improvements at one new signal, signalized intersection at Tanner Williams Road at Eliza Jordan Road North.
So moved.
Second.
I'd like to take the opportunity to thank engineering for moving this along swiftly. This has been a complaint for a lot of residents that, uh, uh, move up and down Tanner Williams and, uh, it's, uh, sorely needed and I know that engineering, it's been difficult acquiring some of the resources we need and, uh, and they just made it happen. So thank you, Brian, and, and your team. We really appreciate that and all the residents who use that road too as well. Thank you.
Is that, is this for a traffic signal or a flashing signal? I know there was, I, I was gonna ask on, on the, uh, previous, I know at one time there was a flashing signal there. We're gonna put a?
Yeah, it's gonna be a fully signalized intersection, Commissioner.
Great.
Absolutely.
Well, you're, you're correct, it's well, uh, definitely needed at that intersection.
We. And commissioners, we have one add-on. Approve appropriation contract with Mobile Area Mardi Gras Association, any amount of fifteen thousand dollars from District One funds for the twenty twenty-three Mardi Gras season. Project is subject to paperwork and legal review.
So moved.
Second.
And sixty-five, commission announcements and/or comments.
Uh, I just wanna, uh, say, give a special thanks to, uh, Cherie and Deana and Tyler and Keith and his whole team for Keith, Tyler, Tyler, yeah, Keith, that's right. Sorry, it's been a long morning for the, the work that they did just to make the dedication of the sculpture at the, um, African Town Heritage House, the success that it was. They worked some long hours and long times and, uh, Tyler probably would have a lot more black hair, were it not for this project, but, uh, he's hung in there and he's making it work and we are counting down to an opening date on July eighth. So I just wanna thank you, a lot of which I did, nobody saw, but, but I know the toll it took on you and what it took to make that happen, so I just appreciate it.
And I would like to add, that was, that was a wonderful event and I was so impressed with that memory keeper sculpture. I mean, the metalwork, the symbolism, it is certainly, uh, something that is worth seeing and, uh, and it's in a great location right there next to the Heritage House. Lot of good things happening and look forward to the opening as well with a clientele to exhibit. Good job, Commissioner.
I have nothing.
Number sixty-six, approve request for a motion to adjourn until February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.